Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 8th, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:03 PM. We have a roll call.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinayan.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Live salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero, invocation by City Clerk Ari Kosakian. Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Standing for the invocation. On October 9th, 1930, Aviator Laura Ingalls landed at Grand Central Terminal in Glendale, California, to complete the first solo transcontinental flight across the United States by a woman. Tonight, we pray for the American pioneer of yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Ingalls had the quintessential American trait of being a pioneer, of being unafraid in the face of great challenges, against insurmountable odds, or in the unknown, especially when it is new and different. We pray that we continue the tradition of our forbearers to pioneer new ideas, ways of thinking, or doing things, and always keep our eyes towards the rising sun. We pray our children will learn from us and pioneer themselves to greater heights and accomplishments. We pray that our adventurous spirit never dies. Amen.
Thank you. May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 8th, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, October 3rd, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next, under Presentation on Appointments, at 3:00 A is the agenda preview for the meetings of October 15th, 2013.
In this bears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for October 15th to commence at 3:00 PM, we have one business agenda item, and that's Director of Community Development and Economic Development. This is regarding the housing developer identified in response to the YMCA request for proposals for development of their adjacent property located at 140 North Louise. That afternoon, for the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, we have one item, public hearing, Director of Community Development. This is regarding Housing Element, and this is 2014 through 2021. That evening, for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items: Chief of Police, United States Department of Justice, 2013 DNA Backlog Grant, and Request to Purchase Automated Liquid Handling Robot Manufactured by Quagen for the DNA Lab; Chief of Police, Medical Services for Police Department Arrestees and Prisoners; Director of Public Works, this is regarding fiscal year 2013-14, Americans with Disabilities Act, curb ramp installation and sidewalk pavement repair program. Lastly, for consent, Director of Public Works, conditional vacation of the first alley west of Central Avenue, Doran Street Pioneer Drive and easterly portion of the first alley, and this is north of Doran, west of Central, Carmel Partners North Central Avenue Apartments Project to be located at 607 through 33, and 317 through 21 West Doran Streets. Under action items, we have one item, and this is Director of Library, Arts and Culture, and Public Works. This is additional architectural services for seismic upgrades, auditorium upgrades, and maker space, and dedicating a room to man's and humanity to man for the central library renovation project. Under hearings, we have two items, Director of Community Development. This is continued from 10/113, and this is an Appeal of Design Review Board, approval of application number 1234093, and it's a property located at 4201 Pennsylvania Avenue. And lastly, Director of Public Works, this is regarding conditional vacation of a certain portion of Arden Avenue and Beulah Street as part of the upcoming Arden Avenue Rehab Project, and this is vacation case number 169V. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And next, please.
Next item at 3B is Presentation of a 25-Year Service Award to Stephen Morris, Public Works Assistant Environmental Technician.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and guests. My name is Maurice Holteguerra, and I work for the Public Works Environmental Section. It is my pleasure to join you tonight in recognizing a 25-year dedicated City of Glendale employee, Mr. Steve First, I'd like to start out by introducing Steve's family and girlfriend, so if you could please stand for recognition. Mr. Frank Morris is Steve's dad. Next to him is Jolie Morris, Steve's sister, and next to her is Ms. Toni Wells, Steve's girlfriend. Thank you for joining us tonight.[332.37][332.37](APPLAUSE). Steve is a true Glendale spirit. He was born and raised in Glendale. In fact, he attended Glendale High just a few blocks up the street. Steve's hobbies include traveling, camping, backpacking, hiking, diving, photography, basically anything outdoors. Steve's a true outdoorsman. As far as his career in Glendale, Steve started his career as a yard attendant in the Public Works yard in 1988. He was quickly promoted in 1991 to a sewer maintenance worker, and in 2003, he came to work for me as an Assistant Environmental Technician. I was immediately impressed by Steve's quick manner in learning the technical aspects of his new classification, which was very different than his previous classification. Since Steve's arrival, it's important to note that our section's duties have grown substantially, and Steve has been instrumental in assisting me in the fats, oil, and grease program, or FOG program as commonly referred to, AQMD permitting, air quality, underground storage tanks, landfill permitting, and the citywide stormwater program. Steve is a self-starter who was always willing to learn something new. It is not uncommon for Steve to seek out training opportunities, and he has even used his own money and vacation time to attend some of these training seminars. It's important to note that Steve was the very first city staff member to obtain the Designated Operator Certification for Underground Storage Tanks back in 2006, when the state law was amended to require UST owners to have this DO certification. So having said that, Steve, on a personal note, I would like to thank you for your hard work over the years, and most important of all, for putting up with me for 10 years. So congratulations.[443.12][443.12](APPLAUSE).
Well, wait, how about letting me read the proclamation first?
Oh, that'll be good.
Geez, guys, you're way ahead of the game. Okay. A 25-Year Service Award Presented to Stephen Morris. This certificate is an expression of sincere appreciation for 25 years of loyal and faithful service. May the future bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and devotion to duty so richly deserve. Signed by myself and Scottish City Manager. Mr. Quintero, would you mind taking that down?
Aye, Chief.
This is very nice. This should go to your...[492.31][492.31](LAUGHTER). Well, anyways.
It's smart.
Decide to do it. And in addition to putting up with this gentleman, he's also had to put up with Steve Zern for many years.[506.24][506.24](LAUGHTER).
Now, speak.
Well, thank you. It's been a privilege to be a staff member here and work with a lot of fine individuals. It's been exciting and sometimes an adventure. So it's just a pleasure.
Time went by fast, didn't it?
Goes by quick.
Congratulations.
How long have you got?
Well, you've got at least five, 10 more, right?
At least. At least that. Thank you.
I don't want to make you stay, so if you all are going out to dinner, then get the heck out of here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.[563.00][563.00](APPLAUSE). Okay, and next, please.
At 3C is a proclamation designating the month of October 2013 as Filipino-American Heritage Month in the City of Glendale.
Okay, ladies, this is a long one, and I'll bring it down since I'm married to a Filipina, who is working on the Filipino Children's Foundation tonight. So that's coming up. Hello, you all. Okay, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Filipino-American History Month, also known as the Filipino-American Heritage Month, is celebrated in the United States during the month of October, the Filipino-American National Historical Society established Filipino-American History Month in 1988. The Filipino-American History Month is widely celebrated in California and Hawaii, where a large number of Filipino-Americans reside. And whereas the month is also officially recognized by the California Department of Education, and in 2006, it marked the Centennial Celebration of Filipino Migration to the United States. And whereas the City of Glendale recognizes the increasing number of Filipinos who live and work in the city, and therefore join in the celebration of Filipino-American Heritage Month. And whereas the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, together with the Seroptimus International of Verdugos, will celebrate Filipino-American Heritage Month on October 11th, 2013, at the Glendale Central Library with visual arts, dance, and cultural presentations. Now therefore I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Filipino-American Heritage Month, and congratulate the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale and the Seroptimus International of Verdugos for their ongoing expressions of cultural awareness." Got it all out.[689.62][689.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
See you on Friday night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Well, I'm a thank you, Mayor Weaver, and honorable members of the City Council for this beautiful proclamation. It will be beautifully displayed at the library on Friday, and I want to take this opportunity to invite you to join us on the celebration of Filipino-American History Month. We will have Arts and Culture, display of beautiful artifacts from private collections, and at 6 o'clock, we will also have a cultural presentation of songs and dance. Also, a beautiful video which says, "Welcome to the Philippines," while you're in Glendale. Also, we also have a beautiful array of beautiful food from collection of restaurants in Glendale, Filipino restaurants, of course. So if you want to sample a taste of the Philippines, please come. We also will recognize at this event the members of Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale who have been with us for the past 22 years, and at the same time, recognize the first Filipino president of Woodbury University, Dr. Luis Maria Kalingo. I'm joined today by Seroptimus International and past president of Faybag, and they are jointly sponsoring the event on Friday, together with the City of Glendale Central Library of Arts and Culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you Friday.[804.00][804.00](APPLAUSE).
3D is Appointment of Judy Palmer to the Design Review Board. This was a nomination made on October 1st, 2013 by Mayor Weaver.
Okay, Judy Palmer, as you can see from her resume, has served two times on the Design Review Board. I talked with Hassan Nagani to find out what he thought of her performance on the Design Review Board and to other members of the staff, and they were all extremely excited to see her coming back on. So with that, I would like to nominate her for the position.
I'll second it.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I wanted to thank the mayor for this particular appointment, and Ms. Palmer for agreeing to serve again. I think it's very important that we have a landscape architect on the board. We didn't have one until now. I had appointed her the first time around, and I thank Mr. Weaver for stealing her, and she'll be a great addition.
Judy, you're not here, are you? Hidden back there? She's watching us on TV. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinayan.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Mr. Nagani, you pleased? You got a full board again. Thank you. My previous one left the city, right? Had to resign. Good architect. Okay. Now we'll go to one specially. Our police chief, I've been told we'd like to come up and talk about traffic-related issues in Glendale, not to be confused with the traffic-related issues in Los Angeles, who are experiencing the same condition. Leave me, a number of these pedestrian accidents are because of the pedestrian, not the cars. So with that, Mr. Chief de Pampa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I don't know if our city manager would like to give a little preamble before we get started.
Just by way of introduction, something that certainly has been reported, and we've taken full stock of the council's direction to focus on pedestrian safety as well as the conduct of motorists, to the extent that we have had a series of rather high-profile incidents, in some cases, very unfortunate fatalities involving people, pedestrians, and cars. It's something that Glendale wrestles with unfortunately on a two-regular basis every few years, and we saw the opportunity to, one, fulfill the council's direction to bring forward an issue for public review and discussion, but then also to talk about the rather extensive toolbox that the police department has assembled for addressing these issues in an ongoing manner. So with that, Chief, if you'd like to follow up.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. Mayor, members of council. We did want to give you a quick overview of some of the activities that we have ongoing related to traffic and pedestrian safety, and right now, what we're trying to do as part of the area command is really take a data-driven approach to where we're having the most significant problems. And obviously, it's hard to predict where these type of incidents might occur, but we think that by using good data and really focusing on the five most significant problem areas in each of the five area commands will give us a good approach of giving a directed enforcement in those areas. And I really want to emphasize that it is proactive enforcement, and in essence, the issuing of citations that truly changes driving behavior. We think this is really important. So we're going to be focusing throughout the city at those particular areas. One of the strategies used to augment that directed enforcement is pedestrian stings, and as you recall, we have used this quite successfully in the past, where we actually put a decoy pedestrian out to cross streets in certain designated areas, and then we'll monitor the compliance of traffic to the right-of-way of those pedestrians and issue citations accordingly. Again, the idea is not out there to entrap anybody or to create an unfair environment, but to increase the awareness of our driving public about the right-of-way of our pedestrians. One thing that we're doing immediately, especially when we see a trend developing like we have experienced in the last two to three weeks, is to get that awareness level heightened as rapidly as possible. So to that end, we've deployed our electronic message boards out at key areas in the city, again emphasizing the yield to pedestrians message, and concurrent with that is our motor officers are handing out traffic safety flyers that focus on, particularly on pedestrian awareness and safety in both English and Armenian languages, and they will distribute those on every public contact that they make. And again, the goal is try to aware that or raise that immediate awareness. One thing that we've had going on is a really intensified public outreach campaign, and I think many of you council members have certainly supported and been involved in that in the past. There's really two elements that we're looking at. One is raising pedestrian awareness and in terms of being aware of their surroundings and making sure that it's safe to cross when it was a particular street. And the other side is looking at the driver, and you know what we, what, here's what we found is that in pedestrian vehicle accidents, it's about a 50-50% shared at-fault rate. So it's not just the driver, it's not just bad driving, and it's not totally unaware pedestrians either, but it's about a 50-50 combination of that. But one thing that we do know is that about 80% of the vehicle accidents can be attributed to driver distractions. And so we've really intensified an effort to get that message out. Two outreach campaigns that we have is entitled Look to Live and Driven to Distraction. Both of these campaigns have been actively ongoing for the past two years. The website is there for viewing public if they'd like to go and see the variety of activities related to those efforts and what type of materials might be available for the purpose of education. But we, again, these have been in place for some time. We think we've made some good success, but we certainly have to continue. One of the things that kind of thinking out of the box in terms of driver and public awareness and education was the utilization of wrecked vehicles. We deployed those a while back, both on Verdugo and on Glen Oaks, and it was amazing the amount of attention that it attracted from our public.
That Mr. Najarian's car?
And that's Councilman Arn Najarian there getting the message out, and fortunately, it wasn't his car.
Oh.
But he, he. Thank you, Chief. My colleagues are thinking otherwise. Thank you.
But he was there getting the message out for us, and it was amazing the amount of electronic media that picked up on that approach, and literally every major news station broadcasted that. And again, it's an attempt to raise awareness. The other part of the equation, of course, we have enforcement, we have education, and the third part is engineering. There are things we can do structurally to help enhance safety, both of our driving and pedestrian public. You know, we find that so often we have pedestrians that step out into traffic, whether in a crosswalk or mid-block, but they fail to look to the left. Something as simple as that. And so here was an attempt to mark certain high-profile intersections and crosswalks with a message, a reminder, before you step off that curb, check to your left. And we find that a very consistent primary collision factor, these are right-hand turners at an intersection that are looking to the left and finding that opportunity to accelerate into traffic and make their turn without first checking to the right. And lo and behold, there you have a pedestrian in the crosswalk, and that's a frequent occurrence. But these are some of the things that we're doing, of course, we're working hand-in-hand with traffic engineering. There's certain traffic calming measures, as you remember, that is an illustration of the street in front of Hoover High School. And as a result of that tragic pedestrian death of a student up there, we were able to do some redesign of that area to help regulate traffic flow a little better and make it safer. So these are some of the things that we have ongoing, and of course, I guess the real bottom line is that this isn't a police department's problem alone. We can't do it alone. We need the help of the public. We need the support of the public, hence the intensified public outreach campaign, and looking at different segments of the community to partner with us in making folks aware that whether you're driving or walking in this city, that everybody's got to do their part to help address this issue and improve our traffic and pedestrian safety. So with that, again, we just wanted to give you an UN public and overview of some of the activities that we have ongoing, and certainly answer any questions that you might have, or take any suggestions you might have.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, thanks, Chief, for coming in, and we all know we have a problem, but I also hope that people appreciate how much you've done and engineering has done, and that's been done to try to make our streets safer. You mentioned those people making the right turns and looking to their left and not seeing the pedestrians in the crosswalk. As a pedestrian, particularly in the downtown, I've encountered this a lot.
Yes.
Been close to hit several times for people doing this. Have we thought about some sort of marking for drivers to, just the way you have on the ground for the pedestrians, something to remind drivers in some of our busier intersections to look right, to watch for pedestrians?
And that might be an excellent idea in terms of engineering, some kind of sign or postage there to do that. We've certainly used the electronic message sign to get that word out. Obviously, it is a violation if you fail to yield for a pedestrian.
I know we say, I know we say yield to pedestrians, but to specifically remind people when they're turning right to look to the right for pedestrians, because that's where I find people, they're not thinking of the pedestrian. Like you said, they're waiting for that break in the traffic.
Right. I think that would be an excellent idea to explore. And the other thing that we, on the other side, is getting the word out to our pedestrians to make sure you make eye contact with that driver before you step out. Because, you know, I think the notion is that you're in a marked crosswalk, and the signal turns to green and says to walk, and they're in that mindset that they're in a safe corridor, and it behooves the pedestrians to make sure, not only to look left, but make sure you make eye contact with that driver who's making that right-hand turn before you step off the curb. So those are the type of things that we want to address and heighten the awareness. But your suggestion is very good, and we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Christian Najarian.
Chief, as you know, about five years ago, we had a Safe Streets Summit. We brought the folks down from Cal Berkeley, along with the California Traffic Safety Office, and we held a nice two-day seminar with engineering staff and pedestrians. And recently, I've asked Mauro Yakubian, who's Chair of the Transportation and Parking Commission, to contact them again, touch base with them again. And she did, and she explained some of the issues we're having in Glendale, and they are willing to come down at no cost to the city to review what we're doing. And from what it sounds like, maybe we can teach them something and raise the bar for everyone in the state, or if they spot something that we've overlooked, they're more than happy to discuss that with us. And of course, I've left that with the city manager for his convenience, as well as the Public Works Director. And I guess the message is that the council is not sitting idly, that we are all going to do everything we can, and we're all brainstorming, as well as members of our Transportation and Parking Commission. I've got several letters from Alec Bartra Souf with certain design ideas, and I've suggested that they bring that up through the TPC process, the commission process, to flesh out those ideas and bring them up to us, because none of us are happy with the status quo. Of course, the whole police department and others are not happy either, that we're all going to, we're all in this together. We're going to do everything we can to make this a safer city.
Councilman Najarian, I think you're right on point, and the more we can partner together, the better. And we had a great working relationship with Berkeley during their last stint down here. We have a great reputation with the Office of Traffic Safety and have been able to secure significant grant funding that helps augment our resources in addressing that. But we welcome that. We will reach out to them. I think last time, they were very, very impressed with just the wide array of different strategies that we were employing down here. But certainly, having them review that and give us ideas as to what is happening elsewhere in the state would be very helpful. So we will most certainly reach out to them.
Mr. Sinayan.
Chief, thanks for this very timely report on this very worrisome issue. The problem, the biggest problem that I've noticed is that this isn't a new thing. It's like we go through these stages. We have flare-ups, and then things sort of subside. We get lulled into a false sense of security, and then we have another flare-up. I remember six, seven years ago, I think it was Captain Nicolaius and now Captain Paulitis, and John Gilkerson was part of that task force, where we're trying to work with the community and make the city easier, you know, safer. And then, again, things got better, and I think everyone's trying to do their best, but I think we got to do better. I'm worried that with, you know, our stated goal of making downtown more pedestrian-friendly, 18-hour day, their best, but I think we gotta do better. I'm, I'm worried that with, you know, our stated goal of making downtown more pedestrian help, you know, friendly, 18-hour day, our goal is to get people to go to restaurants and to go to bars and have a good time in the evening. As, as our culture becomes more urbanized as opposed to suburban, we're going to have even more such problems. So can, can we also, along with doing what we've done and doing it better, concentrate on forward-thinking? For example, is Brand Boulevard going to be safe in a year or two when we have 3,000 additional residents actually living on Brand or right off of Brand? Otherwise, I, I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow council members that I think all of us should, should be all in on this issue because people, I mean, people are dying. It's, it's that simple. And I want to encourage all the community groups, community organizations to step in, work with the police department, and put our heads together, see how we can make things better. Because again, yes, the police department cannot do it alone. Community groups cannot do it alone, but together, I think, can make a difference.
Absolutely. And I think your point is well-taken, Councilmember Sinanian, is that we need to be forward-looking. And, and I think the relationship between the police department and traffic engineering is very critical in looking at our future development and mitigating as much as we can by design. I think there's a lot that can be done to help enhance the environment and in a preventative sense. But, but again, as you pointed out, it comes down to partnerships with the community, being willing to work together to, to create that awareness, to ensure that, that education takes place and that we get the proper compliance. And unfortunately, you know, we're a very leanly-staffed organization here, and we're a little bit in, in the push-down-pop-up mode. So you, when you, when you talk about peaks and valleys, that's what we experience. We may address an area for a while and the problem will, will subside, but then it pops up elsewhere. And unfortunately, this is the environment that, that we have to deal with as best we can. So the more we can do by forecasting and, and with visionary design and development, so much the better in terms of, of being able to address those issues. Thank you for your thoughts.
The group that gets me the most are those pedestrians that walk out in the middle between lights at an unmarked intersection, at a marked intersection, any one of them, with their heads down, sometimes with a cellphone in their ear. I'm screaming through the windshield, "Look, look, don't you realize?" And they don't. They're just plodding along like there's no cars there. And I don't know how you're gonna educate those kind of people.
To the extent, I'm sorry.
You cannot engineer every doggone intersection in this city to prevent that kind of stupidity. And I know you don't have enough staff. You can't put them out there everywhere. And in the city, everybody in this room and outside knows, we have maniac drivers in this city. Never used to be that way. They're there now. And they don't give a darn who's in the way they're going through. Lastly, if you hit a pedestrian, it becomes a felony when you leave the scene. So if you hit somebody, stay. But so many of these, now you're hearing, are felony charges because they've left the scene.
Correct.
And I don't know what they do in cities like New York where I'm used to seeing people going between cars and everything. Is it because there's so many cars, they're going so slow, they can't hit anybody?
Perpetual gridlock, I think.
That's what we're gonna look forward to, maybe. Mr.?
I would only, one thing that you had said, sir, and certainly in terms of how we push that message out, one family at a time, one household at a time, a lot of time you will get senior citizens who are looking down and not out because they want to make sure they don't trip. And so to the extent that they're looking down right at their feet, you know, encouraging as we talk to our parents and our grandparents and, and other family members, just to be fully aware of the environment. And it's something I think that is a natural tendency, but we want to make sure people are safe.
Okay, Chief. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe cut through to a few more people. Okay, what is next?
Any other city councilor or staff comments?
We haven't got to that yet. Now it's staff comments. Anybody?
I don't want to.
Oh, I bet you don't.
First, I wanted to say that last week, several of us attended the Glendale Fire Foundation's luncheon to honor exceptional people in the community and firefighters who have done amazing things, acts of bravery and selflessness, as our safety officials often do and our public often does. And just hearing the stories of what ordinary people have done and people who work for the city have done was very inspirational. I want to congratulate everyone who was involved with planning the event and, and who attended. Next, I'm going to mention an event that's coming up on Sa- this Saturday, the 12th, because they're not here. And that's the Associates of the Brand Library, a group of which I am a member, is hosting a special event, a fundraiser called Glendale Collects. And this is a fundraiser to raise money for the restoration of the Brand Library, specifically for some of the murals that had been painted on the ceiling of the building. They were unable to be kept in place, but the Associates is trying to raise the money to store them and frame them and have them displayed at the Brand Library so that everybody can see part of the splendor that was that building. The paintings are beautiful, they'd be a great addition. I really hope the public comes out and supports the event. Tickets are still available through the Glendale Arts website, I believe, and also at the Alex Theater Box Office, and I think also at the Americana at Brand Concierge Desk. And people are nodding, so yes, you can, you can shop and eat, have a nice lunch at the Americana, and go buy tickets for this wonderful event. So I really hope that people take this seriously. If you love the Brand Library, if you love the Associates, Associates of the Brand Library, please come out to this a friend. And lastly, I want to introduce a very special person who's here with us tonight. My father, Barry Friedman, who hasn't visited for many, many years, and certainly not since I've been on council, is here. Please stand. It's my father. He lives in Florida and he's across the country. He meets his new granddaughter and to, to see me. So, welcome, Dad. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sure. No, not there. Last week, thank you, Mr. Quintero. Last week, I, along with some fellow council members, I attended the opening of Five Star Theater, which was a wonderful event. Really, we have unbelievable movie theater facilities in Glendale. And there are a lot of celebrities there, which was also nice, giving more exposure to Glendale as a center for arts and movies. And I think that's the image we want to project out there. Today, the mayor and I attended the groundbreaking of Maryland Park, which is in South Glendale. Again, we should be very happy that under these strained economic conditions, we're still able to build parks. And I don't know if I mentioned, but obviously, it's, it's in South Glendale, the, the part of Glendale that's most, in most need of open space and green space. So that's going to be a wonderful addition to our city. And, and the construction time is pretty short, from what I understand, it's about six months, seven months?
Be open in April.
Yeah, it'll be open in April. So I look forward to being there for the opening. And lastly, tomorrow is Walk to School Day, and I encourage everyone to go. I'm going to go. My, my only problem is I have to decide which one of the four kids I go with. Different times, different places. But we'll be there, we'll be walking. So I encourage everyone to walk all the time, but particularly tomorrow, and walk with your kids to school.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes, the firefighter's luncheon was very inspiring. Like I often say, it's easy to drive by the fire stations and assume that nothing's going on in there. But in fact, they train very hard. And then when they talk about some of the awardees and the things they've had to do, it's, it's a lot harder than it seems, folks. That's, that's for sure. The other event I attended, along with Mr. Kusakian, was a wonderful event at the library. And it had to do with the Armenian Legion, which was a group of Armenians literally from all over the world, the United States, South America, the Middle East, that volunteered to fight during the First World War, and specifically to fight against the Ottoman Empire. But it was a very well-attended event. The Cal State Northridge professor that gave the initial discourse was excellent. There was a wonderful display. And people from all over the region, overheard people that come from West LA and, and just all over Southern California for that, for that event. And then finally, on Sunday, I attended the Siquevila, which we are trying to bring to Glendale. And that, as usual, was fantastic. It, instead of going from one place to another, or just a lateral type of event, it went south through Chinatown on Broadway, then on East Fourth, Spring Street, and then all the way out to MacArthur Park. There were 10, the LA Times talked about 100,000, and might have been more than that. I mean, there were just lots of people, not only riding bikes, but also walking in and out of all of the different restaurants and the shops that were open. So I'm looking forward to working with the Siquevila folks, walk-bike Glendale, to bring that event to the city of Glendale and maybe also Burbank. But it's a big, I think the Chamber of Commerce is going to be very, very interested in what this may bring to, to Glendale.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing.
Yes, Mr. Sinanian.
I should also mention, last Sunday, Glendale Memorial was having its annual fundraiser gala event, and Mr. Najarian and I were present. A great event for a great cause. My only comment would be that I hope that next year's event is in Glendale.
I think I was sitting at that table with you too, wasn't I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Our mayor was there with his wife.
Thank you. That's the first time out, but total different saving, situation. It saved a lot of money, stuff, and time and effort of the volunteers. So I can understand why he's done, having done a number of big events myself. That's the reason. We don't, we still don't have a facility here that can have 700, 800 people on a sit-down dinner. Okay, what is next, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a really quick announcement. I know this will be an announcement close to your heart. This Saturday, October 12th, at Verdugo Park, between hours of 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., will be the Fifth Annual Glendale Canines in the Park Event. This is an event that'll benefit our canine units in the police department, which do outstanding work. Our police force has come to rely on them heavily for a number of tasks that they do. But with that, I want to see if GTV6 could play a short clip that we have for our viewers at home promoting.
Hope there's a dog in it.
Come join the Glendale Police Canine Unit for Glendale Canines in the Park. This free event will be dog-friendly, family-oriented, and fun-filled, featuring live police canine demonstrations, low-cost pet vaccinations, a pet adoption fair, and pet first-aid seminars. Enjoy a live band, barbecue, and activities for the kids. You can even enter your dog in the Halloween costume contest. All proceeds from this event benefit the Glendale Police Canine Unit. So see you there on Saturday, October 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Verdugo Park.
And if I didn't mention it, there'll also be discounted vaccinations for your pets. That includes cats, if there are cat owners who dare bring their cats to the canine event in the park.
And I believe one of our police dogs will be retiring before too long. Just too bad. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item is Consent Calendar, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
I will move the Consent Calendar, but I want to pull 5C.
And I'd like to pull 5E as in Edward also.
Okay, nomination for the remainder of the Consent Calendar?
Move the balance?
Second. Motion was made by Councilmember Quintero, second.
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Air Weaver?
Hi, please read 5C.
5C is Director of Public Works regarding property management agreement with Modern Parking, for the maintenance and operation of four-city facilities in the Larry Zarian Transportation Center. And C1 is motion authorizing a one-year extension of the contract at a cost of $1,798,500 and a new total not-to-exceed contract amount of $8,918,544.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I am very happy to move this extension for Modern Parking. I think they've done an excellent job throughout the years. We're earning a lot more money than, than we have with the previous national operator. I believe it was a national company. This smaller company seems to be doing a much better job, not only making us more money, but I think the condition of the, of the structures and the staff. So I want to make that motion. However, for a couple of years, or more than a couple, it seems like, or longer, we've been talking about the electronic parking system as we use. You know, I go to different municipal lots around LA, and there's a central kiosk to pay. It's just much more automated, as well as private buildings, including some on Brand. So I'd like to have us do something in the next six weeks or however long it takes. Let's talk about and let's get some ideas of what we can do to automate the, the parking here in the city of Glendale. I think it's over, it's overdue.
So you want it before June of next year?
Yeah.
He's leaving. He's gone.
In my lifetime here. So let's say, whatever, six weeks, however long it takes. But I mean, it's time to do it. I noticed it was just everywhere. My last two experiences in Pasadena were basically didn't talk to anyone, just put the ticket in, paid, and out the door.
Also, the, it's not only an issue of ease of use. Also, those lots that we have that are not automated, after certain hours, they're just sort of, you know, that, that hand is
Is up and up.
We're, we're not making money on it.
It's a revenue. Mr. Sinanian, answer that.
A quick one, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Both those things we're working on currently, so you should see those coming back. It'll be a little, well, one of them may be close to six weeks, where we come back with, with our proposal on increasing our digital meters throughout the city. And then at the end of the term of this agreement, whatever decision is made, part going forward to the next five-year period is to automate the garages as well. So we spent a lot of time vetting different types of equipment and firms that supply that equipment, so we feel we're ready to make that recommendation to you.
Right, but that's, look, that's the point. I mean, how much longer is this going to take? This isn't, we're not reinventing the wheel here. There's companies all over, I don't know how many there are, but I mean, there are companies that do this type of thing. Why are we waiting? Why not do it now? Let's implement it, and we're done. When the new, when we go out for an RFP, whoever responds to the RFP will be working with whatever system we set up.
That's our intent. We, we're ready. We have two firms that we think can equally provide the equipment. One a little more expensive than the other, but at the end of the day, both will work fine for us. And that was what we had intended to do, is to incorporate that in and have the next operator use that equipment.
Okay. Mr. Sinanian.
Question. Now, I understand from the report that this extension is a result of a contract that was, that came through an RFP, right?
Correct.
Passed through an RFP. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I have a comment.
Mr. Najarian?
And I just, I remember when we did discuss this RFP, there were rather heated discussions as to the cost estimate that the, that the Modern Parking had submitted. We thought, some thought, no way, they're lowballing, there's no way they could keep their costs at that range. But I do understand that for the past several years, they have been coming in even lower than their estimated amount, resulting in additional income, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year more income to the city. So I want to take back my skepticism that I displayed four years ago when, when that was done. So, and I support Mr. Quintero's thought of moving into the automated age in this parking system.
So there's been a motion, a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Yes.
Sinanian?
Hi, please read the lengthy 5E into the record.
5E is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding additional funding for chromium-6 research studies primarily relating to additional research for a reducing coagulation filtration RCF demonstration facility. E1 is Resolution Authorizing Execution of Supplemental Funding Agreement and Related Documents with the State of California for Funding Under the Water Security Clean Drinking Water Coastal and Beach Protection Act of 2002, Proposition 50, for an additional grant up to the amount of $304,482 for the chromium-6 treatment research studies. Two is Resolution Authorizing Execution of Contract and Related Documents with the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California under its foundational actions funding program for a grant amount up to $180,000 for the chromium-6 treatment research studies. Three is Motion Authorizing An Amendment to the City's Existing PSA with Hazen and Sawyer for an additional amount of $180,000, plus a contingency of $20,000 for a new total not-to-exceed contract amount of $470,602 to provide engineering and scientific support for continuing operation of the RCF treatment facilities and MWD research efforts. Four is Motion Authorizing Four is Motion Authorizing Amendment to the City's Existing PSA with CDM Constructors Inc. for an additional amount of $70,000, a new total not to exceed contract amount of $1,959,264 to provide operational field support services for the additional RCF research effort. And five is a resolution appropriating $546,482 to provide a funding advance for additional Chromium 6 removal research.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. Here's my point, and I'm not going to support this because I believe that the two current systems used, the, as it's described, the reduction, coagulation, filtration, and the secondary system, which is the weak base anion, are not effective methods to remove Chromium 6 from our water. And what we're doing is continuing to throw, we just have a part of it, but we continue to throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at this technology, which is not effective. It is, by their own results, not effective. It works somewhat if we blend it with clean water, and we can lower it to the parts-per-billion threshold that is given. So I would like, regardless of whether this passes or not, I would like Dr. Blute from Hazen and Sawyer to come to us to address the efficacy, the efficiency of the two systems, and I want her to tell us that they're not the greatest systems and they're not working that well. Because my understanding is that they are not working that well. And in fact, there was a news press article several months ago which called that out. I don't know why we're going down this path without forcing them, putting, we don't, we're maybe the tail on the dog in this whole process, but I want them to come up with a better system and make sure that the millions of dollars that are being put into this are going to be effective, and they can tell us that they're effective. I don't think they can do that now.
Is there a second on that thought?
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Najarian, for quite a while, I've been listening to you talk about the system that you think does work. Has that gone anywhere? Have you had any success with your chemistry?
Not in municipal agencies. In the private sector, it has been accepted, it is being adopted and implemented with private filtration systems, and that's what just galls me. I mean, there's a system, you know, if a councilman can round up one of his constituents and come up with a system that is effective, and it's essentially ignored and looked at surprised by our leading scientists in this, we got problems, folks. So I want this to come out in the open. I'm not happy with Dr. Blute's research and with her recommendations to proceed down this path. And if it has to tip everything else on end, fine, but I think we have to expose this and get to a better system for all of us. This is all of our health at stake.
Is there a second person who wants that?
Can we have staff respond to this one?
Well, briefly, because...
We have worked with the professor that, or doctor, that had experimented or had put forth some of these alternative methodologies. Our GWP team and Dr. Blute had consulted with him, could not quite achieve the level of efficacy that he had postulated, but even more so, the problem that we have is magnified because technically, the water itself is classified as a hazardous substance because it's contaminated with Chromium 6. So being able to give him the stores of contaminated water, such as it is, to do his demonstrations was problematic. We would hope that he would be able to procure, because it would be a technology that he ultimately could patent and sell in the marketplace, that he could procure from some other purveyor the necessary samples to do the test that he wants to do, but as of yet, we could not get EPA to collaborate with him on a level that would allow him to fully demonstrate his technology. So, I mean, Steve Otten, if you want to...
No, that sums that particular part of it up. If you desire to have a presentation, we can make that the only thing.
Asking if there's anybody else on the council that wants it. We've been through it before, but...
I haven't, I'm sorry.
So you want it?
No, no, I haven't been through this process. In fact, I'd like to hear...
So you'd like the people brought back again to...
It sounds like...
Yes or no? Do you want it or not?
He doesn't know what...
Sorry, do I want, do I want...
What Mr. Najarian asked for, he wants specialists to be brought back to demonstration force again, which has been done before.
Perhaps, and what we can do, just to level that playing field in terms of the information that is available, is arrange a briefing for you, Councilman Sinanian, that we can arrange through GWP. And then certainly, if council wants to bring the scientist back, the doctor that we're using, certainly we can do that. Certainly she has no, I think, problem or reservations coming back and doing that. Or we can go straight to that presentation. I think more information is generally better, now that the Department of Public Health has set the draft. MCL, I think people will be talking about Chromium 6, so certainly I appreciate Councilman Najarian's desire to want to put this issue in the forefront, because it's very, it's very real and palpable at this point in time. It's finally become less of a tangent, more of a real issue.
So what do my colleagues wish to do?
How important, how important is it that we pass this tonight? Is this a drop-dead day?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Quintero, this is to get money back, so I think this is very important. We want to get our reimbursements. At this point in time, this doesn't have any impact on whether or not we continue to move forward.
Well, I'm going to move 5E.
Is there a second?
And then, if I can make a comment, I just want to remind the public that this is not happening in the abstract, that this is not happening here in the city of Glendale, that somehow a local company has done something wrong, or even the city. This is a giant plume dating back to the aircraft manufacturing, aerospace manufacturing days, that starts up in the northern San Fernando Valley, way, way up there. A giant plume of water that is moving through the entire San Fernando Valley into Glendale, into Los Angeles, and I'm sure all the way down into Long Beach eventually. And so we're having the so-called industry group, the polluters, we are, as a government agency, along with the EPA and everyone else, having to clean up the mess that these industries left behind.
And the state is finally going to regulate and say, 10 parts per billion can meet the state standard, Glendale is five parts per billion. We are half what the state is going to require. We've already told the state that. We'll stick with our five parts per billion. Okay, there's been a motion to get money back, and a second, and we will call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Epstein.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Thank you. What is next, please?
Next item would be Oral Communications. This is the three-minute event announcement portion. The full five-minute portion will be revisited at the conclusion of city business.
Leon, Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the council, and staff. I'm here basically on behalf of the Glendale Library, but I have a couple other things to talk about. First of all, on October 10th, we're having Nelson Castillo, a Hispanic lawyer, who's going to talk about the green card for anybody, especially in Hispanic community, who wants to get information how to become a lawful citizen of the United States. Secondly, on October 19th, we're having a folk music group entertaining people who come to hear him, hear them, that's Saturday, October 19th, 2 o'clock. And then, November 2nd, another folk music group will be there at 2 o'clock. And anybody who comes to the library, you can get your parking validated from the structure across the street, and that's simple to do. Now, I couldn't help thinking that we had Aaron Brockovich at the Kiwanis Club about 13, 14 years ago, and that's when somebody first started talking about the problem that you've just discussed, and I wish you a lot of luck in what you're doing to try to clean up the water. Now, also, Saturday is the Duck Splash, the Kiwanis Duck Splash, so you're all invited to come there. We raise over $100,000 for use of, helping community activities, youth groups, and so forth. Now, I'd like to follow through on Mr. Quintero's comments about the forgotten heroes, the Armenian Legion and World War I. I went to the event, I know Mr. Quintero was there, our clerk, Arti Kasakian, was there, and it's impressive, and the exhibit's going to go on until October 19th. And I urge everybody, especially Armenian families, don't be bashful, come to the library, it doesn't cost anything, the parking is validated, to see a great exhibit that's been across the whole country, a great exhibit about the Armenian Legions and World War I. The Armenian Legion was, I think, about 800 to 1,200 Armenians from all over the world, from the United States, from South America, and parts of the Mideast. And they were in the fighting that went on in the Sinai, in Israel, was now Palestine, still is in a way, and they fought the Ottoman Turks, and they won one or two battles in what is now East Bank, West Bank, and they also marched into parts of the Ottoman Empire in Turkey, and they won there. And they were disappointed with certain promises that were made to them, but that will go on, and parking is validated again, and we urge everybody...
Thank you, Leon.
...come to see the forgotten heroes.
Three minutes.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Welcome, next speaker, Sharon Townsend and Marie Philippin.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, city council members and staff. My name is Sharon Townsend, I'm the CEO of Glendale Healthy Kids. I'd like to take this opportunity to announce an all-city, all-age, all-cultural health festival on Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Glendale Civic Auditorium. All services are free, and they consist of complete health evaluations, flu shots for children and adults, blood work, cancer screenings, medical consultations, dental and eye exams again for children and adults, BMI testing, scoliosis testing, and much, much more. All the children in the school district will receive the flyer that you received tonight in addition to buzz tags, banners, radio and TV spots. I'd like to thank Scott Ochoa and the city of Glendale for your support of this very important service for the city. It's a very significant opportunity for adults and children to access free health care all in one place on one day. At this time, I'd like to introduce Marie Philippin. She's the new manager of Community Relations and Business Development for Glendale Memorial Hospital, and the hospital is very involved in this health festival.
As Sharon mentioned, my name is Marie Philippin, and I'm the new manager of Community Relations at Glendale Memorial. I'd like to thank the mayor and council members, Aron Najarian and Zara Sinanian, for attending our annual evening of wine and roses this past Sunday. As manager of Community Relations, I will be the liaison between the hospital and local community organizations. Currently, I serve as a trustee on the board of St. Mary's Church here in Glendale. My family and I have been residents in Glendale for 10 years, and I'd like to thank you and look forward to serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more cards. What is next, please?
Seven, Adoption of Ordinances. 7A is ordinance amending existing lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T for city-owned property located at Fern Lane at Pasa Glen Drive, where the Glendale Sports Complex is located. This was introduced on October 1st, 2013, by Councilmember Sinanian.
Which, yes, the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Next item is Oral Communication. Discussion is limited time, is not a part of this agenda, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
I could first, Speaker Ry Baing? I'm saying it wrong.
My hand argument's probably horrible, too, so...
It is.
My name's Ry Berg, I'm a resident of Montrose, and I'm the chair of Walk by Glendale. I'm here tonight to present a letter to city council. In regards to the recent pedestrian collisions that have happened here, we definitely want to thank the city council and the city, not only the police department, Mr. DePampa, but also the Public Works Department for all the work they're already doing in this area. And we look forward to partnering with the city moving forward. We had our monthly steering committee meeting last night, and what we decided to come to you tonight for was to possibly discuss developing a traffic safety task force where we could bring together members of the community, like Mr. DePampa was mentioning, so that we can bring in community groups, maybe the Chamber of Commerce and other groups, to really try to bring this issue to the forefront. So that's our request to you tonight, and we look forward to working with the city moving forward. Thank you to Mr. Sinanian for reminding everyone that Walk to School Day is tomorrow. We look forward to that. We had 15,000 children walk to school last year. I think it was one of the biggest events in the state, so we can be really proud of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Frank Gallo.
Thank you. My name is Frank Gallo. Two weeks ago, city management replied to a grand jury report indicating that the report had been biased. As someone who does financial analysis, I thought that such a bad report from the grand jury was worth looking into, since it was hurting the city's reputation. I found out the grand jury is made out of 23 members who happen to be ordinary citizens that serve for a year, and according to the California Penal Code, Section 9338, this group of people act as a watchdog over the operations of public agencies within the county. The report is prepared by reviewing the comprehensive annual financial report of 88 cities in the county. In turn, those financial reports are prepared by independent auditing firms. The component to which the city manager referred to was the net revenue percent. That's the ratio of expenses over net revenue. More simply, if my payments per month exceed the amount of my net salary, that ratio will be negative, as it is the case in the city's situation. According to management reply, the grand jury report did not take into consideration transfers to the city general fund, nor did it take into consideration the fact that the city lost state support for the redevelopment agency. City management further implied that a complaint by a Glendale citizen caused the jury to fail the city. With regards to transfers, all cities were treated equally. Glendale was not treated differently. So the city occupied the 57th position because 56 cities performed better. With regards to the transfers, all cities, oh, excuse me, second, the redevelopment agency loss of state support was suffered by all cities in the state, yet many cities in the county fared a lot better than Glendale. Third, based on the financial report of the cities, the same components were analyzed, regardless of complaints. The mayor asked about bias, and nobody indicated to him that such a situation did not occur. Furthermore, the 2012 audited financial report for the city of Glendale had the following statement, as you can see it. "It is uncertain that these cost increases will be sustainable over the foreseeable future. Costs continue to outpace any growth seen in major revenues, such as property and sales tax..." tax, and while these categories may not be declining, an even increase, as was the case this past fiscal year, increases in pension costs and other employee benefits continue to exceed revenue gains." At this point, I'm wondering who's being biased? The grand jury? The independent auditing firm that is preparing the CAFR? Or city management? Thank you.
Next speaker is Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. Apparently, following being a second act, the civil grand jury reported on the financial and fiscal condition of 88 Los Angeles County cities. Based on city answers to a questionnaire, Glendale ranked high on financial management practices. On the fiscal health, on various indicators of finances, Glendale presented a mixed picture. On some individual indicators, Glendale did well, ranking in the middle third, or in or near the upper third of all the rankings. But on others, it ranked close to the bottom third or worse. One low indicator, to which I'll return, looks at the amount of expenditures compared to revenues. Regarding these low rankings, the city manager dismissed them, saying in his professional opinion, it was a matter of garbage in, garbage out. He also said the grand jury failed to consider transfers from the electrical utility to the general fund and the effect the redevelopment agency's dissolution had on the city's general fund finances. Each indicator chart of the report with its rankings and the data on which they are based states at the bottom that the data source is the comprehensive annual reports, the CAFRs. These are the independently audited financial statements for the cities. Glendale's is submitted for council approval by its director of finance with the prior approval of its city manager. I'm sure the city manager did not intend to say that the CAFR was garbage, but without a further explanation, that appears to be the case. Artie, could I have my chart on the screen, and could you leave it there for the duration of my comments? What you see on the screen is the grand jury data regarding revenues versus expenditures. The first column, where the electrical revenue transfer to the general fund is irrelevant because that column represents the revenues and expenditures from all city funds, including those from GWP. The first column shows that the city has been spending more than it's taking in. In 2011, the city spent 9.1% more than it took in, and in 2012, 11.2%. If you compare 2011, before the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, with 2012 after its dissolution, for both all funds and the general fund, you'll see that overspending was occurring even before the redevelopment agency was dissolved. I assume the shortfalls were plugged by drawing on reserves. That would explain why the report's Chart 9 shows unassigned general fund balance dropped from a little over $63 million in 2011 to under $38 million in 2012. In looking at this data, I realize what should concern us is not rankings, but the fact that our city is living beyond its means and doing so by eating into its reserves. As I said earlier, the grand jury stated the numbers it was using are CAFR numbers. Now, if the grand jury is using false CAFR numbers, the city needs to point out those specific numbers, both to the grand jury and to the general public.
Well, as far as I know, this issue has long been settled. We've responded to the grand jury. Just for the record, a couple of a couple members of the civil grand jury from a past year called me and volunteered that that grand jury had reviewed the electric and water rates of all the cities in LA. They looked at the current evaluation this civil grand jury did. These two individuals said they wonder what the heck this grand jury was doing. So, we have a difference of opinion between two grand juries. So, with that, you don't want anything, do you, Mr. Ochoa?
Only if you want to. That's probably some of the worst form of sophistry I've seen from that podium in quite some time, but if you'd like to, we can get into it.
Well, very briefly. You could talk for an hour if you wanted.
Sure. Just very briefly, the cursory level of analysis that was proffered as something deeper than that really is actually indicative of what you saw from the civil grand jury, where if the idea is that by just excluding electrical transfers, utility transfers from all cities, by excluding impacts of redevelopment dissolution on all cities, it must therefore hold that all cities are treated equally, and thus, the depiction in the civil grand jury's report is just as clear and accurate a reflection of the health of that city, when in fact, that's completely through the looking glass, because some cities rely more heavily or less heavily on utility transfers, some relied more heavily and less heavily on redevelopment. A city like La Cañada Flint Ridge, or a city like Sierra Madre that has very little, if any, redevelopment program, is not going to have the same level of impact as a city like Glendale that has a tremendous reliance, and had historically had a tremendous reliance on redevelopment. So, to say, well, everybody had lost redevelopment, so therefore, we have to put them as an apples-to-apples comparison is completely ridiculous. When you look at the transfer of utility revenues that are going into the general fund, understand that the reason why our utility transfers have existed at probably a higher rate than anybody else's is because the amount of money that we get back on the property tax dollar is significantly less than either of the three cities that are around us. So, our base has grown over a period of time, over a period of decades. And to take one snapshot, to look at one year's report from the civil grand jury, and try to make some kind of longer-lasting overarching statement about the health of this particular city is, again, just ridiculous, like a bunch of blind men filling an elephant, coming up each with their own description as to what the animal looks like, and they're all wrong because they all have one piece of the animal. The statements that you heard were both completely out of context, as well as just flat-out sophistry.
Poppycock. Thanks for your brief response. Margaret Hammond?
Evening, Your Honor, members of the city council, staff, and the TV audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, long, long time resident of Glendale. First off, 818-548-3916, bulky item pickup. Palmer, Whitein, all kinds of couches, furniture, et cetera, et cetera, on and on. So, please call in for those bulky item pickups. I don't know who dumps them there, but that's, we need to get rid of them. I want to bring up about the business of pedestrians. Number one of the, one of the things is they're on their cell phones. I drive all over the city, day in and day out, and that's one of the curses. I believe cell phones are the curse of traffic safety. And the other thing is that people get out of their car, on the driver's side, of course, and throw their doors wide open. I had an instance tonight on my way here, not just the driver's side, but the rear passenger to get a child out. Now, you talk about idiotic into oncoming traffic. Is, I know it's against the law. I know that that business of throwing your door open is against the law, the DMV, but you know, some people have their own DMV instruction booklet, I believe, and they don't have the one that the rest of us that are safe drivers or thoughtful drivers, they have their own. They don't care about using the proper one. Now, the other thing that I'm really up in arms about is the business of the Tropico Neighborhood Train Station event. I would like to know why the only homeowners group in South Glendale was not invited or even notified of this event. After all, we are the ones that have the most to lose when the city keeps dumping their junk in there, and we have to put up with the traffic and so forth. And I believe that we should be involved in any decision affecting our neighborhood, and it affects our neighborhood. The traffic, you're putting in that huge 500 Huddhose and Kenner, whatever it is, is going to affect traffic. And on top of that, I discover, after looking at this, that there is a suggestion of putting the bus yard, the future bus yard, on the corner of Brand, or almost at the corner of Brand and Gardenia. Now, that's, you don't think that's not going to add extra traffic and problems to our area down there? You can't even get through it. Los Steel is in Central now, sometimes a 10-minute wait. And the idiots that voted or put in additional housing without enough parking, the streets are not getting any bigger, they're getting smaller, and you keep adding junk to it. We have a half, which is 100,000 people, in our part of the city, and you just keep dumping more on us. This is not fair. We have paid our taxes and have, should have, your caring about us. We're the oldest area, Tropico, in Glendale, before Glendale even. So, you know, people, the citizens that are trying to get to work and go on other important engagements are being really hamstrung by the traffic situation down there. And then, one of my other beefs is, of course, the same kind of mindset applies to plans for the bike lanes. Particularly, they're talking about narrowing down Chevy Chase and all that nonsense. Why should priority be given to a handful of people when there are 100,000 drivers that will be affected by these, all these bike lanes, cutting down traffic? That also causes a lot of people irritation and also causes accidents, because people get fed up and irritated at being in traffic, sitting in traffic for long periods of time. So, I really think we need to look at some of these things before we go off half-cocked and keep on. I have another issue, but I will not bring it up tonight, and it's big time. It's going to be coming before the city council. But I'm just saying, thank you very much. Keep in mind, we are the longtime taxpayers and longtime sufferers from being dumped on in this, the area that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tamara?
Please give your name for the reference.
Good evening, everybody. Tamara, Mary Gregorian. I was here last week. I tried to communicate with all the council members and with you, Honorable Mayor, regarding my mother's concerns. So, I will try to be very brief, sharp to the point, requesting written response to the letter with which you became aware of the problems that my mom had. And I'd like to get the final position, final response by the city, as well as by the city council members, so that we will take further steps under law. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has the city not formulated a position on this?
No, I mean, we had denied the claim quite some time ago, and I think there was further inquiries whether that could be revived, and that was the issue. But we'll, and Ms. Tamara, my office has communicated with Ms. Gregorian, and we can follow up, I'll follow up to make sure there's, if there needs to be an additional written response, we can write that as well.
Okay, what's next?
I have some new business.
That's all.
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate legal proceedings in Superior Court. The name of the proceedings, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Please, your second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. And next is a German?
Second.
Stand, German. 729.